We pray that you would grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is earnest disagreement, and the peace and joy as they go about their work, them the confidence and the patience in our public servants. Finally, we ask that what we are doing, that what we do is pleasing to you and beneficial to those who live and work around Delaware. In the sovereign name of Jesus. The Lord is the King and just as well.
Thank you, Lisa. Parks and Recreation Advisory Planning Commission meeting held on June 6, 2018 as recorded and transcribed. Item C, acceptance of the motion summary, the Sister City Advisory Board meeting held on April 10, 2018 as recorded and transcribed. Item D, acceptance of the motion summary, the Finance Committee meeting held on April 25, 2018 as recorded and transcribed. Item E, resolution number 18-46, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the Health Line of Delaware and Morro County Sexual Assault Response Network Program and the Delaware Police Department. Item F, establish August 13, 2018 at 7:30 PM as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 18-64, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit request by NNG Techhar Oil for renovation and expansion of the Marathon Gas Station at 473 South Sandusky Street on approximately 0.80 acres business district. Thank you.
Move for approval, consent, agenda?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Browning, a second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6 is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
Mr. Browning?
Parks and Recreation, there was a frisbee golf presentation and may look for that in our near future, next few years or so.
Mr. Rohr?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Okay. Move on to item 8 was the presentation by the Delaware General Health District. Sheila Hittleson. How are you this evening?
Good.
How are you? Just fine. If you'll give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us a moment to talk. Sheila Hittleson, your Health Commissioner with the Delaware General Health District, and I believe most of you know Travis Irvin. He's our program, one of our program managers and our chief epidemiologist. We're just here tonight to give a little bit of an update on what's going on at the Health District. And of course, as always, when I talk about the Health District, I'm not talking about the building down the street, but the community that we serve, and then to see if there's anything that the Council is working on that we could work on with you. So first off, I just would like to point out a couple of the items that are at your place that Ms. McCloskey passed out for you. We have expanded our newborn home visiting program to include prenatal home visits. That is a program that is very near and dear to our hearts because we believe that meeting these young moms and the children when they're first born and getting into the home to see what kinds of issues and things that they may be facing is really primary prevention at its heart. And that's one of the things that the Health District is responsible to do, is to do anything to prevent any illness and protect the health of our community. What we've been finding over the past couple of years with our newborn home visiting program is that we are finding folks within our community who maybe don't have a safe sleeping arrangement for the baby, or a young mom who's maybe facing some postpartum depression. And so in working with our primary care providers, the OB-GYN physicians, both in our community and also in our surrounding counties where many of our babies are born, they've asked for the ability to make a referral prenatally as the baby is growing, to meet with one of our nurses so that when the baby does come home, there is a safe environment for them to come home to. So we've expanded that program. And I believe in our first week, we already had four referrals, so we're very excited about that. One thing that might be of interest to all of you, I know a lot of people think of Delaware community as a very affluent community, but one of our top needs as we did the, as we've been doing the newborn home visits, is a safe sleeping arrangement. And we're very fortunate to receive information. One of the things I've realized in the last few weeks or months is this is what we are as your Health District and all of the response, all of the new residents who move into Delaware County, both buying a home or moving into an apartment and a condo, again, welcoming them to the Delaware community and letting them know what we as their Health District do for them, kind of under the radar most of the week, but also what kinds of things that we offer for them if they're looking out there seeking services. We have just completed our community health assessment for this cycle, and we are now working on the Community Health Improvement Plan. So far, the two things that have really risen to the top that we'll be working on in our next community health, chronic disease, and then also mental health. In the mental health realm, we're going to be looking at things like bullying, the opiate and other drug abuse issues, as well as partners. Then we invite all of our residents to participate in a quality of life survey. So it's available on our website now, on our Facebook page. You may have received it as if you're part of some coalitions around town because we're working on the entire partnership to find out from our community what they see as the quality of life here in Delaware County. And we should be able to give you some of that information even related to the city once it's all finished, and if we're able to break it down that way, we certainly will. The other thing that we are working on right now with the Community Health Assessment, we have lots and lots of data from across the county, but we're working right now, Travis and myself and our vendor, to see if we can't give you some of that data that's specific to Delaware City. So as soon as we have that fact sheet available, we'll be getting that to you. You should be receiving your Mosquito Monday updates. Those started a few weeks ago. We have only had one pool so far in Delaware County test positive for West Nile virus. You might remember that as our county follows the CDC recommendations for best practices related to fogging, and we only fog in response to disease either in the human population or in the mosquito population. So we don't routinely fog unless there is disease. You should also, last week, have received your District Advisory Newsletter. That is a requirement that we are required by law. Quarterly, we give you all updates, and we've really expanded that newsletter to include not just things for our elected officials, but also our community partners, and we're encouraging our community members to sign up for that newsletter if they're interested. And then lastly, I would just share with you that our growth in the county, just as your growth in the city continues. And so our board has really been working over this last year trying to make sure that we're prepared to do that. We underwent a facilities planning where we looked at not only our building, but then also a program review to look at how well or not well were we serving the needs of our community. And so we are expanding. We are opening up East Side Satellite in Sunbury, hopefully later this year. We just got all the contracts signed back today, so that will open later on in the fall. And that won't just be for folks who live on the east side of 71, but if you live, work, play over in that area and you want to come to that location, you certainly will be able to do that. And then as soon as we get that one up and running, we're also planning on being able to serve those residents. We also, though, are a little bit constrained by the buildings that we're currently in. So our board has undergone a facilities review and a feasibility study to see how we can make the buildings at 1 through 5 West Winter work. And we finished that feat. We have about 75 people who work in those three buildings on a daily basis. And so we continue to be challenged by that because they are old buildings, although very well maintained. We've done lots and lots of improvements, but really trying to make room for additional staff has been somewhat of a challenge. And then I would last share that I was able to attend one of your council committees related to parking, and I was very, very appreciative of the opportunity to share with the council some of the challenges that we face, but also to hear from the council those things that you all are working on to address the parking. Travis has just one little update because Councilwoman Keller is always interested in ticks, so you just want to share a little bit about what we're doing with ticks this year?
Yeah, so the last couple of years, we've seen the increase in Lyme disease in Delaware County. It's caused by the tick, the deer tick. He comes over from Pennsylvania, so coming east coast to west coast, kind of becoming more prevalent in Ohio, especially here in Delaware County. So we have seen a little increase last two, three years. People with Lyme disease who do not have a travel history anywhere outside the county, whenever we get that, we try and figure out where they were and send some of our crew out to canvass the area, talk to people who are on the trails or any daycares nearby who have kids outside. So this last week, we were up in the Delaware Dam area talking to people. There was about 15 to 20 residents out there enjoying the park on that day, talked to the park ranger there, gave them our information on ticks and Lyme disease and shared that. So it is becoming a little more common, and when it happens, we try and figure out where they were exposed and try and go out and educate in those areas because that, you know, it's not like we're going to get rid of.
... presented at a national conference on it. And so we've been working with all of our swimming pools, but really working with the people who come to the swimming pools and talking to them about safe practices around the pool and how you can help to prevent disease such as not changing diapers on the pool deck, which is a really big, big problem when you're really big, big problem where we're getting diseases. So in the surveys this year that we're doing with the residents, we're trying to find out what their needs are, so that as we continue to work on those messages we contain, what the needs of our community. Is there anything that the council's working on that we can work on with you, or does anyone have any questions? Questions? You're doing a fine job. Okay. Thank you very much. If you want to read this in.
Consideration of a new liquor permit for Mystic Golf and Games. Permit, which is wine changes. This is for within 500 feet, no churches, libraries, or schools within 500 feet, no issues with the applicant. Police Department finds no reason here if you have any questions.
Sure.
Excuse me. It's David Starman, 328 Lindwood Street.
Scott Redder, 333 North Liberty Street, Delaware.
Want to tell us about your new venture?
Sure. Opening a multi-sports, so they'll be able to play football, baseball, lacrosse, hockey, zombie dodgeball, et cetera.
Can you have this done by the end of September when the Germans come?
Kidding.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. And Elaine, if you will read items 10, 11, approval of rezoning amendment for the Weslin Inn, amendment for the Weslin Inn on approximately 1.09 acres, parcels, ordinance number 18-51, an ordinance for plan mixed-use overlay district to be established for the Weslin Inn on approximately 1.09 acres, parcels number 519-433-04-252, an ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of preliminary development plan for the Weslin Inn on approximately 1.09 acres, parcels 519-433-04-005-000, and 519-433-04-002 on property zone POI and R3 PMU, plan mixed-use overlay district at 235 and 239 West Williams Street. Thank you. Mr. Affleck, do you have anything to add?
I do not at this time.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I think the applicant wanted to come forward at this time?
Jim Manos, 5973 McEwen Court, Dublin, Ohio.
Place 10 West North Street in Ostrater, and with plan for land away that we could preserve the parking on the north side of Ostrater, or the north side of Williams Street, and that we would have the opportunity to realign the entrance and use the eastern drive as our main entrance. So we followed up the conference call today, and we're going to amend that exhibit and bring that back. We're going to resubmit it, and that sounds like in a week, and hopefully have that back to you by your next meeting.
Okay. Which will be August?
6.
No, not the 6.
The east side, so that'll help to alleviate some of the parking concerns that we've had and make the site a little bit more.
Reading of ordinance number 18-61.
Ordinance number 18-61, an ordinance amending ordinance number 11-86 to extend the permissible closing date of property previously offered for sale at public auction.
First reading was last, at the last meeting. It was reminiscent when we built Glen Parkway. So it's ready for action if you'd like, if not, you can wait.
Does anyone have any questions on this? Is there a motion?
Yeah. Three readings on ordinance 18-61.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for adoption of ordinance 18-61.
Second. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
... known as the Joshua Morgan Annexation by Andrew P.
Now, the annexation, formal annexation for you, the final step in the annexation process. The map is coming up on the screen. This is just located north of Sunbury and State Route 521, just north of Bowtown Road. There's three small parcels today that have one house on them, and I believe the applicant's intent is to annex, provide services to the lots, perhaps remove the house and put in two other houses, or perhaps keep the house and build on the one parcel that's vacant as well, to be determined. Slated for application for planning commission at this point next month. So we do recommend approval of the annexation at this time. When was the last date, Elaine?
Um, we had, so September. I don't have the fact sheet on me, but it looks like, I believe it was September 21st.
So I think the intention of the applicant, like most applicants, to try to dovetail the zoning and the annexation as closely as possible. Mr. Wecker's here and representing them, and he can, he could speak to that. But you could certainly take this to another reading to try to achieve that result as well with, again, the rezoning slated for planning for this next month.
Mr. Wecker, like to add anything?
No, ma'am.
What's the wish of council? Do you want to consider it tonight, and you want to take it to another reading?
I'm good for tonight. Move for suspension of rules. Move suspend the rules according to three readings on ordinance 18-62.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Mayor Riggle? Yes.
Move for adoption of ordinance 18-62.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Question carries. Item 15 is an ordinance number 18-63. If you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 18-63, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request placed Avroth Land Development, and located on that.
Thank you.
Senator Mayor, members of the council, this is for final subdivision plat for the section five Belmont Place. You've previously approved the zoning, of course, preliminary plan, preliminary plat, and final plan for this. And for whatever reason, the applicant decided to hold off on the final subdivision plat for this section until they were ready to, getting close to ready to build, which is now. This is for the northwestern portion of the development we know as Belmont Place. This would finish out this phase of Belmont Place. Applicant may come forward in the future with future phases on the western half of the property, to be determined. We don't know that yet. But this is for 38 single-family lots. You can see here, 38 single-family lots that will finish off the Belmont Place subdivision. There is a bit of open space and buffering to the west in anticipation of the mixed-use nature of this site that could occur on the western portion of the property. And if it ends up being single-family on the western portion of the property, then there's a little more open space and buffering, which is not bad. So happy to answer any questions that you may have. Your planning commission does recommend approval, as do we as staff, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for day?
Why can't you think of where this is?
This is in the southeast part of the city, off Peacebloom Road, just east of Glen.
What'd you say, it's number three?
Yeah, it's number three. It's in three.
Suspend the rules?
Yes. All right.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 18-63.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance 18-63.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. And item 16 is ordinance number 18-64. Elaine, if you will, please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 18-64, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit request by NNG Techhar Oil LLC for renovation and expansion of the Marathon Gas Station at 473 South Sandusky Street on approximately 0.80 acres on property zone B3, community business district.
And this is the first reading?
Senator Mayor, this is the first reading, and you set the public hearing earlier this evening for your next meeting.
Okay.
I'll present then.
All right. Ethics, Chris, you're up.
Elaine, do you have a clicker or anything?
Yes, sir.
So unless you would all like to stay for an ethics review, which you're more than welcome to. Because, okay.
Thank you, Elaine.
If you'd like to stay for ethics, you're more than welcome to.
Probably 15. Okay. All right, I'm going, obviously, the slides have been distributed copies to each member, so I'm going to go through these in a fairly fast clip here, but if anyone has any, any questions about anything specific, please feel free to interrupt me during it. So with, there's a few sources for the ethical considerations here, just the law, our own ordinances, and also in the charter. There is a specific provision of the charter for removing a council member for ethical violations. It is in there, but it's kind of like impeachment provision of the Constitution. It's a little archaic there. And also just wanting the citizens to have confidence in government. There's plenty of things that we could do that would be perfectly lawful, but might have such a bad appearance that we'd want to avoid it anyway. I think Darren put the spinning thing in there.
I see this.
Yes. With the, the Ohio Ethics Law was passed back in the 70s post Watergate, the Ohio Ethics Commission administers that for state-elect, for local elected officials, and they're a source both of potential investigations that can be forwarded for local prosecution, but also just a general resource for training and to give opinions and that sort of thing. They're very good about doing that if we need to reach out for them. Now, there's a potential, various potential criminal penalties for sort of the higher level of ethics violations, both in the state code here. I listed a few, for instance, having interests in a public contract can be a misdemeanor, felony-level offense. There's the obvious bribery, theft. There's potential federal liability as well. The ones I listed here aren't necessarily geared just toward ethics and public servants, but there are a variety of things that people tend to get charged with if they're in that sort of situation, such as making false statements to investigators, depending on what they say, and also wire fraud, which is basically using emails. Starting out with potential conflicts of interest here, just from our own policy manual, I have that definition from the cities, and it's just sort of any sort of potential kickbacks, perks, special consideration because of someone having their position with the city. Once again, this is the definition here from the policy manual, just a city year. Read in on that, it mirrors the ethics law, that no employee shall seek, receive, or give any sort of gratuities, forms of any sort of compensation, anything of significant value from those who have or seek business dealings or exchange services with the city of Delaware. As council members, you are required to disclose sources of gifts in your annual disclosures. Main term here is significant value.
Chris, real quick, I heard that last paragraph.
Yes.
Sure. Is that employees of the city of Delaware, or is that elected officials?
See, this right here is for the employees specifically, but I kept it in here just so you're kind of abreast of that, that policy as well. Certainly. And so there's a few examples here that Darren and I have from the other training about, you know, what may or may not be considered of significant value. The OSU tickets are kind of a perennial offender for central Ohio officials being involved in that sort of thing. There's certain other things where it's like, you know, for instance, you have a sign, a sign photo of Darren, something like that.
We know who did this.
Squeeze, squeeze ball, like, like one of those stress balls and things. The main thing, part of the reason what we're going with here is like if you're, for instance, someone who does purchasing for the city, if they're at a trade show and the trade show has like, say, branded stress balls, something of that nature, that are just out there for everyone to take, chances are that isn't influencing their purchasing habits from that vendor because they're getting that stress ball. But if the vendor is, for instance, whining and dining them and giving them Ohio State tickets, that creates more, more of an appearance there as well. With regards to accepting gifts, there, there's no real hard line number on value. There's what's kind of colloquially referred to as like the Bob Evans rule, sort of a meal at Bob Evans. Not sure where that came from. But in our own policy for employees, there's a $75 cap on the gifts, but depending on who you're getting the gift from, it, it might still be appropriate to refuse it even if it is under $75, and that is cumulative throughout the year. Another example of conflict of interest is improper influence, that's anything. So as a city council member, you're not going to be voting on, say, a lot of directly purchasing, anything of that nature, but still, as a member, you do have influence through your, through your position here potentially with the city, and this just sort of the legalese there for not going to be accepting or soliciting things of value for that sort of thing, or as well as just using the authority of your office to secure anything of value there. And there's also, the city ethics policy prohibits soliciting or accepting honoraria there. With regards to gifts, the main thing is if you have a pre-existing relationship with someone and they're not giving you a gift, you know, this sort of a common sense thing. It's like if you have someone who you say are friends with from when you were younger and you've, you know, had a tradition of exchanging gifts, that's not a big deal. But if it's somebody who, for instance, wants to do business with the city and they've never given you a gift before, all of a sudden they are giving you said gift, that could be an issue. But once again, it depends more on the individual situation. And for instance, with the holiday gifts there, this is something Darren sends an email about every year. For instance, if somebody brings, gives you food, candy, that sort of thing, you get accepted on behalf of the city there and just put it out in the common area.
We're on Canadian.
Yeah, well, and that's, yeah, Darren, I saw Lee left as well. I think, yeah, I guess he said he's like, Lee and myself can help dispose of anything there, but. Also, with regards to outside employment, a big thing, obviously, is don't use city resources in furtherance, that sort of outside employment, don't engage in it during work hours. That's more of a thing for city employees, but could potentially apply to members. Another thing, obviously, is don't use the logo in some sort of manner or that's suggesting sort of an endorsement, favoritism, bias, that sort of thing, which includes obtaining potentially consulting work, something of that nature. There's an exception with regards to selling goods or services to the city where that can be done, but it's a very narrow exception, and it's something we would need to work through if, if that situation were to arise. As I stated before, obviously, having an interest As I stated before, obviously, having an interest in, a personal interest in profits from a public contract is, is illegal. It is a criminal charge there. And then, so once again, if, if there is that sort of situation where a member would be potentially selling goods or services to the city, as I said, there is an exception we could potentially meet, but we need to address that on a case-by-case basis. Yeah, these are... Nepotism, I've been to, talked with a few folks from the Ethics Commission before, and this is the most commonly violated provision of the Ohio Ethics Laws. So it applies to any sort of city, city employment, whether that's full-time, part-time, or seasonal. It's not illegal for two family members to work in the city, but it's just, obviously, there's plenty of examples within our own city. But you just can't be authorizing employment for family members or using your authority or influence to secure employment. So once again, as members, you're not usually going to be voting on a particular person's employment, but can't be kind of using your influence either. The definition of family member is, is very broad, as you can see here. And with the authorizing employment, that's sort of the final decision on whether or not someone was hired. And so family members can't be employed if they are the family, the final hiring authority that family member can't be employed by the agency they supervise, potentially could be in a different agency, but not in that particular one. So, once again, using the prestige of the office formerly or informally to get someone a job would be a violation. And then, once they're hired, you can use your position for continuation, implementation, or terms of their employment. So that includes the compensation, includes potential discipline, that sort of thing. There is a exception here for a minor child working for the city here. As you can see, it's, it's fairly detailed, so that would be something that would need to be worked through if it were to come up. The anti-solicitation policy is something we have where you're not supposed to solicit on behalf of any cause or organization during their work time. So for instance, if somebody is going to be doing Pelotonia, something like that, can't be sending out solicitations for donations on, on email, and you also can't be doing it during work time as well.
Well, this is called a kingy bars.
That, that technically is still, yeah, it's, it's one of those where the, yeah, the best way to, to do it is, there is an exception for if it's not in like a work area. So if it's in like the break room and you're not going around, and an employee isn't going around basically harassing other employees about it, then it's okay. But if, actually, it would need to be in a non-work area. So, yeah, that one, that one's, yeah, not a lot of people know that one as well. So there is, that's, once again, from the employment policy.
What if?
Yes.
You have like Girl Scout cookie sheet, and you don't say anything, you just lay it someplace, and someone just signs up.
Yeah.
Not pressuring anybody.
Certainly.
They just walk by.
Yeah, I mean, the best practices would be to have it in like a break area, and that's fine for under that. But, so it's obviously very broad. There is the exception for the city-sponsored event like the annual United Way Campaign there, then the city. The financial disclosure statements, I just included this here, obviously, it's, under our policy, it's April fifteenth. The statute actually is May fifteenth, along with the fee. The blank disclosure forms are available from the Ohio Ethics Commission's website. It's not the same as like a campaign finance disclosure. These are the list of the various things you would be required to disclose, sources of gifts over seventy-five dollars, and excludes most family members. You don't have to list birthday, you know, birthday presents, that sort of thing. Investments, ownership, names of clients, or sources of income unless there's a legal, legal confidentiality against disclosing who those persons are. So, that list here. Something else we've gone over, Darren and I have in our other training, is there's no law prohibiting a city employee signing a city council member's petitions, but it could put the employee in an awkward position. So our suggestion is to not ask if somebody wants to volunteer to do so. They certainly can. There's no rule against it, but it could put them in an awkward position there. And once again, with requesting campaign help, while that's not explicitly, explicitly prohibited, that could lead to an appearance of impropriety there. The ICMA Code of Ethics is from TOMS, is it International Council or City Manager?
International City County Management Association.
Yeah, so he has his own sort of code of ethics there, which kind of gets imputed onto us there, us being city employees. And once again, with contributions, no candidate shall solicit a contribution from an employee of that political subdivision, but you can certainly accept voluntary unsolicited contributions there. All right, now Darren, he's the city's ethics officer as a city attorney. He can give advice and can issue written opinions. It's very important when you're asking us to, to draft a written opinion is to give as kind of as much facts as possible about the scenario, because when we come back with the opinion, it's going to list those facts and say, okay, under X, Y, and Z facts here, this is our opinion, so we want, we want to have as much detail as possible so we can give you the best possible advice. Can also contact the Ethics Commission if we need an even more detailed opinion from them. I mean, the Ethics Commission opinions aren't like legally binding necessarily, but it's, it's going to be help if there, if there's any sort of issue we've got there. And also on the Ethics Commission's website itself, there's past opinions, and there's a lot of great information, fact sheets, which is what I based most of this off of. With regards to ethics reporting, employees or members, if needed, can make ethics complaints to the city attorney, and can also contact the Ethics Commission's investigative council directly. That's, that's always an option. But that's, that's my presentation here. It's a very broad overview just of the law in general. I'm happy to address any specific questions, and if there's also anything in particular that council would want briefed on later, certainly happy to do that as well. So.
Any questions? Good job, Chris.
Thank you.
Excellent, very thorough. Okay, we'll move on to the finance report.
We've had the finance report through first half of the year, included in your packet. Been somewhat uneventful first six months. Things seem to be pretty much on pace. Tax collections did tick up a little bit, so we're a little closer to being close to what was projected at budget time. Might note, we're somewhat anticipating some delayed revenue coming from the state with the changes in the business income tax. The businesses are required to file now with the state, and they're, it's not running as smoothly, smoothly as they had hoped, so there's probably a lag in us getting some of the tax revenue back. Other than that, I'd entertain any questions you may have.
You're good. City manager's report.
We are working diligently to fill some critical volunteer posts for the Ironman. We got a number of people that stepped up today, helped us out, so we are, you know, looking forward to that, that event next Sunday. It starts actually Friday. Trucks will roll in tomorrow with a lot of the gear that the Ironman has to set up their Ironman Village, and we look forward to another, another successful event. I think as of last week, they had close to twenty-three hundred athletes signed up, as well as, including... Pardon, yes, I will be doing swim relay. We have a new biker. Some of my brother trains, but my brother will be running, and some of the heat trains will be doing the biking, so looking forward to it. But after getting this about staying healthy in the pool... I'll be getting in the lake, but anyway. So that's, that's, yeah, that's, looking forward to it. Meeting with DKMM, the Solid Waste District, and the city of Marion on Wednesday in regards to our recycling program. Reached out last week and spoke with representatives from Rumkey about what they're doing to address the recycling issue, as well as the Southwest, the Franklin Solid Waste Swaco, which is the solid waste district for Franklin County. Got a lot of good information, basically learning that everybody's in the same boat as we are. The markets for recycling, the export markets are just not there. There's not as much demand, so that's causing a lot of issues within the industry. So we have a meeting, as I say, on Wednesday. Hopefully, I'll be able to report back at upcoming meeting about what our options are going to be. I have a meeting with Mike Fromer tomorrow, the county administrator, talking about EMS reimbursement, prosecutor contracts, as well as their solid waste transfer station. They have, they've hired a consultant to look at their options. They've reached out to us about what we're doing, so we will be talking more about that tomorrow. And then, that is it. I'll be out of the office from eight-eight through eight-thirteen. I'll be at the thirteenth council, August thirteenth council meeting, and Dean will be acting city manager because Jackie is out on medical leave. She had a replacement, so she will be back with us in about five weeks, right? So anyway.
Is she doing well?
Yes, she is. Yes.
She's already had the surgery?
This is last Thursday.
Yep.
She's going on.
What does she do? Heavy punishment.
Okay, council comments. Mr. Jones?
None.
Mrs. Keller?
None.
Mr. Browning?
Got a couple, a couple things I forgot from the Parks and Recreation. If you didn't get a chance to volunteer for Ironman, Dave Staley is August twelfth. They need volunteers. Blue Limestone basketball courts are just about done, so if you want to play some hoops, head down there pretty soon. I got two different calls about Hawthorne Boulevard and the low-quality road, and that's the road I live on, so that's, it was a lot of fun to talk to them. And I attended a Sustainable Delaware meeting and learned a lot about recycling and stuff, so it was good.
Stuff, yeah. Very good. Mr. Ror? Mr. Howlinger?
Well, just open the Pandora's box. So prior to, I think it was right prior to the time I came on council in fifteen, the existing council members discussed the potential of allowing concealed carry on within this building. I don't know if you guys recall that. And then it came about, it was like, well, the ORC doesn't allow that, and that kind of put that at edge, you know, put that away at that point in time. And this was right after, I don't know, some loony shot up someplace.
After Gaddy Gifford got shot.
What's that?
It was after Gaddy Gifford.
Is that, is that what it was? Okay. So anyways, as of March of last year, Senate Bill one ninety-nine was passed, which now allows municipalities to allow concealed carry within municipal buildings that don't have daycares and court offices, and, yeah, there's a list of different things. So I, I know that, and the reason I bring this up is, one, now, if that wanted to be redressed, it's a potential, but then that also really plays in, Tom, to what we, and what Jackie's working with when we're talking about doing security upgrades within this building. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, know that that is no longer a, from what I was able to read, a dead animal. I mean, that, we could allow that by ordinance within, let's say, this building. But just, just something to think about, know that it may be coming from someone in the public in the future, and we need to figure out how we want to address that and how that might play with our... You mean, we could allow... With our security. We could allow concealed carry within this building. Again, it's like, if it doesn't have like daycare or court, you know, there's not a, it's not a court facility, you can allow that now by ordinance. And again... Even though we posted it as... Yeah, yeah, I mean, and right now, it's still, you know, we have a post that is not. Right. And we didn't have, prior to Senate Bill one ninety-nine being passed, March of seventeen, we couldn't override that because that was a state ordinance. Right. But now, now we have, municipalities have the flexibility to allow it if they want. So it's just something I became aware of, and probably throw it out there just to muddy the waters, so. That's all I got. Well, I'd recommend leaving it the way it is, but.
Yeah. I don't want to be sitting ducks, do you?
But I, you know, talked to our police chief and our city attorney, it's...
So would this be, this would be anyone that would come into city hall, right? Not just, or are we talking only?
Yeah, anybody.
Anybody. Anybody.
Well, and as this, as, as I read this, it's not open carry.
Anybody.
But it's, but it's CHL holder, so if you have concealed carry, then... But it's, it doesn't permit, as I read it, doesn't permit open carry. But...
I think if you got rid of the man, open carry would be allowed, though.
We're... This, this is actually written in, if you read that, the part of it, it's actually in the part of the code, like twenty-nine, thirteen, twelve, or something like that. But it specifically speaks to concealed carry. It's under a portion of, as regards to CHL permissions, for lack of a better word.
So are you advocating that we do change it?
No, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not, I'm definitely not necessarily advocating that we would change it, but I just, just wanted to bring it out, make people aware that we could get a petition for that, and I think it's best that we think about it ahead of time and think how that would play into our, our overall facility security plan that we're working with now, especially as we talked about, bridge over to the Gazette Building, the second floor, and secure entrances, and this and that, and the next thing. Just thought it might be appropriate to throw that out there to just stir things up a little bit.
Gee, thanks.
That's all I got.
I think we should talk about backyard chickens again.
Or basketball hoops.
It's much easier. The only thing I have is, I really wish the weather would cooperate a little bit more for the car show to make sure I was there in time to give out all the awards. They gave out a hundred and twenty-five awards. But normally, we get six, seven hundred cars, and of course, as I'm giving the awards away, it's so black, and it just keeps moving and moving and moving, and then the sun came out and it was gorgeous, so. Next year, I'd really like to do a rain date, that we could know about it in advance. We could have canceled it, but need to see, but whatever. I did stop by, if you have a chance to see Jack Hilborn, he just celebrated eightieth anniversary here in business in town, so I think that's pretty phenomenal. And Ironman, we need your help, that's all I can say.